Unfortunately, this evening, both of our student board members had previous engagements. So we will not have a student board member update this evening. Which brings us to presentations. We do have a board award this evening. I would still like to read his nomination form into the record. Michael Rojas nominated by Michelle McCoy. In recognition of his outstanding dedication and commitment to improving student attendance. It is with great pleasure that I nominate Michael Rojas for this award. Mike works collaboratively with the attendance teams across the district and embodies genuine concern for the well being of our students. He epitomizes professionalism. An unwavering commitment to his role and an understanding that attendance issues can often be symptomatic of broader challenges faced by students. Mike routinely goes above and beyond to establish trust and rapport with students. Offering support and guidance where needed to overcome obstacles and ensure their continued engagement with their education. The outreach Mike provides has a profound and lasting impact on our learning community and is deserving of this recognition. On behalf of the students and families of the Monticello Central School District, it is with gratitude. That I recommend Mike for this Board of Education Award. Our students are more successful thanks to his efforts. So we would like to thank Mr. Rojas and also Ms. McCoy for nominating him for all the hard work that he does. Moving on from that, we also have. New York State School Boards Association Recognition Awards. So we have. Actually, most everybody on the board has been to an event or two, but there's other people on the board who have been to a few more than that. So. In recognition of that, New York State School Boards Association has sent along. Some items. So if Mrs. Greco could come up, please. I'd like to congratulate you for earning a Level Two Lifetime Achievement Award under the New York State School Boards Association. School Boards Association Board of Excellence Recognition Program. At this level, you will qualify for recognition on our onboard newspaper as well as certificate of recognition. So thank you very much for all that you do. So also, Mrs. Galligan could come up. I'd like to congratulate you for earning a Level Three Board Mastery Award under the New York State School Boards Association Board of Excellence Recognition Program. At this level, you qualify for recognition on your newspaper as well as the following items. One day free event. Certificate of recognition and a commemorative portfolio. Training certificate. I'd like to use Mr. Groden to come forward. I'd like to congratulate you for earning a Level Four Lifetime Achievement Award under the New York State School Boards Association Board of Excellence. Board of Excellence Recognition Program. This is NISBA's highest award level in this program and qualifies you to the following. Certificate for free registration to our annual convention and education expo event. Certificate of recognition, Commander Black, and Executive Pennset. Sorry, I gotta get that back. Thank you guys for making yourselves better for us, the community and the school district and all. And it does take a lot of time and effort to attend all of that, and thank you very much for your time. So moving on to there, we need a motion to recess for budget hearing. Made by Mr. Vera, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, before I turn this over to Ms. Bayla to present on the budget again. This is, you know, we're nearing the end of the budget process. It will culminate. On, it may culminate on May twenty first. When the public votes on the proposed budget that you're about to see. This budget comes to us after some hard work between administration. And leader department and teacher leaders throughout the district and the Board of Education. The board has received numerous presentations from administration throughout the winter on their proposed budgets. This budget does deal with a no increase in foundation aid. So last or this current year, we're receiving thirty nine million dollars in foundation aid. Next year, we'll be receiving thirty nine million dollars in foundation aid. And like many other organizations, we too are wrestling with inflation. We too have costs that are going up. We have taken some measures to not fill positions and we're eliminating eight. Teaching positions through attrition this year, so no one is losing their jobs. But we took a critical lens to class enrollments, overall student enrollment. And other and seeking other efficiencies throughout the system. To try to minimize the impact on the tax levy. So without stealing any per thunder, I want to turn this over to our Assistant Superintendent for Business. Ms. Lisa Baylen.
Dr. Allen, beginning, welcome to the public hearing on twenty twenty five proposed school year budget. Next slide. I want to start off this presentation by giving some statistical information. Twelve month inflation rate for March twenty twenty four is three point eight percent. Our initial role over budget projection is a three point three percent increase from our current new budget. Our board adopted the twenty four twenty five proposed budget as a two point four four percent increase. Did spend a lot of time reviewing expenditures this year. Knowing that inflation remains high and that New York State was not proposing an increase in state aid for twenty four twenty five. Next slide. New York State law requires that we present the proposed budget to the public in three parts. The administrative capital and program. Proposed twenty four twenty five budget. Is a total of one hundred point three million dollars. It's an increase of two point four million. Or two point four four percent from the twenty three twenty four voter approved budget. Even though the overall budget has increased, each part is relatively the same percentage of the total budget as it was in the previous year. You can see administration at thirteen percent, same as prior year. Capital is fourteen percent or two percentage points increase. And program is seventy three percent or two percentage point decrease. Reason for the shift. Our new governmental accounting standard, board rules for leases. Leases prior to the school year were recorded as contractual expenditures in the program budget. And while leases, copies machines, buildings, et cetera, are recorded in the capital. In addition, financing of the fifty four million dollars project to serial bonds is reflected in the capital. Following slides will provide more detail for each of these parts. The administrative budget includes all district wide costs. Such as the Board of Education, central office. Business office, curriculum and instruction, legal fees, insurance, and certain boces costs. Salaries and benefits for all employees in those departments. Administration budget increased from the previous year by four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Only due to employee benefits. And school administration, which is mostly an increase in security costs. Next slide. This slide is a graph which shows the comparison of twenty three twenty four to twenty four twenty five budgets. You can see employee benefits and school administration show the largest increases. Capital budget counts for all costs associated with the operation of the facilities. Any judgments against the district not already reserved for. Purchase of school buses, debt service. Leases, installment purchase contracts and employee benefits. With employees in those departments. Capital budget increased by one point three million dollars. Majority of this increase is in debt service. This reflects the bonding of the fifty four million dollar project approved by the voters in twenty eighteen. Apologize, my allergies killing me. Here's a graphical representation of the capital portion of the general fund budget. As you can see, debt service shows the largest increase. Next slide. Program portion of the budget reflects all costs associated with instruction. Portion of the budget increased by six hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. Total areas that increased are special education, about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Due to mostly New York State mandated increases in the number of hours of instruction for students not in a permanent placement. And all building and department funding requests are included from issues this proposed budget. Next slide. This slide graphically shows where the front budget is spent. Teaching regular school, teaching special education, and employee benefits make up the majority of the program. The historical representation of the three part budget program portion is the largest component of the overall budget. Increasing each year as we continue to maintain existing programs at the same time, providing additional support. For instruction, non-instruction, and technology to our students. Capital portion has increased slightly since eighteen nineteen. And is an increase over the twenty three twenty four budget. The administrative portion has been consistent and does show a slight increase since eighteen nineteen. Next slide. The three part budget shows how we budget by functional area. This slide shows where we spend the total budget. Salaries, benefits, OC services, and program support. Is the largest portion of the overall budget. There's a one point two million dollar increase. Over the twenty three twenty four. Debt service shows an increase of one point two million dollars due to the bonding of the fifty four million dollar. Next slide. Here's a graphical representation of the twenty four twenty five proposed budget compared to twenty three twenty four approved budget. Yes, salaries, benefits, and OC services make up most of our budget. Program support and debt service show an increase as explained in the previous. How does this budget compare to previous years? This line shows the before budget than the approved budget for each of the last four years. Twenty four twenty five proposed budget is a two point four four percent increase from the twenty three twenty four. Items to note in this budget include the renewal of the central office lease at sixty Jefferson Street. This budget was developed based on the governor's proposal for state aid plus safe harmless. Because the April first deadline for state aid. Or state budget was not met. We developed this proposal using the governor's proposed state aid. But did not reduce the amount by the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of state harmless. That was proposed to be reduced. Safe harmless, if you're not familiar with the term, means that the district will not receive less funding than the previous school year. Also, any funding that we have from the federal government or COVID relief have expired. Next slide. But we do have an update on the New York State budget. The budget is due on April first this year. This year, the budget was almost three weeks late. Were adopted the twenty four twenty five general fund budget, April sixteenth of twenty twenty four. Any later would have made it difficult to meet the state mandated deadlines for publications and notifications to the public. As well as voting at the ballot. New York State budget did respond to the cuts the governor proposed to save harmless. Monticello is projected to receive an additional ninety one thousand dollars in state aid. This additional revenue will either be reduced, used to reduce the appropriation of fund balance or the tax levy amount. The board will make that decision in August prior to the tax levy approval. Here's some statistical information on state aid. The tax cap and the proposed tax levy. As you can see, our state aid increased by zero point three percent twenty four twenty five. Our two main sources of revenue are state aid and the tax levy. A calculated tax levy cap would have allowed us to increase the tax levy by three point seven two percent in a simple majority vote. The proposed tax levy increases two point six percent. Much less than the cap. And it does demonstrate that we only levy what we need to support our programs, not what we could levy. Where does the money come from to support the proposed budget to our service of funding our state aid of property taxes? The proposed budget has a two point six percent tax levy increase. Tax levy has not increased in the last two years. Slight increase in state aid is due to categorical aid increases or expense driven aids. Those include transportation, OCs, and instructional materials aid. Interest rate on our investments continues to be higher than in the past. We are anticipating it will stay at least higher for the first half of the school year. And have reflected that in the increase in interest earnings in our budget. And in order to close the revenue and expenditure gap, we are appropriating seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars in fund balance. Next slide. Here's a graphic representation of the revenue budget. Property taxes increasing by two point six percent, well below the tax cap of three point seven two. The state aid has remained flat. So throughout the year, I do a fund balance projection and updated to determine the long term effect of the proposed budget. What that could have on fund balance in twenty four twenty five and future years. There are several assumptions I make for revenue expenditures. And it's all based on historical data. The proposed budget, if we receive all of our projected revenue and spend the entire budget. Will result in deficit. Which requires the appropriation of fund balance of approximately seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. For the following year, that deficit could be as much as five hundred thousand dollars. Again, these are projections and they're based on historical information. And the entire budget being spent. Based on this analysis, the district will have sufficient fund balance to offset any budget deficits in the future. Historical representation of the sources of revenue since fifteen sixteen. Percentage of the total budget. Revenue item represents property taxes, pilots, or payments of moving taxes, interest earnings. Lease of real property. We've done a prior OC's costs and miscellaneous revenue are all considered local sources of revenue. The graph shows that local sources will fund less than fifty percent of the budget for the second year in a row, funding forty nine point two percent. Date aid will fund forty nine point eight percent of the total budget. State aid has increased significantly since fifteen sixteen, fifteen sixteen school year. The state aid funded only thirty eight percent. We continue to strive to maximize our state aid revenue. Next slide. This slide is the history of the budget going and tax levy going back to sixteen seventeen. While the budget has grown during that period, the tax levy has not. Which means that other sources of funding are being used to support the budget, not taxpayers. Last column shows the tax levy as a percent of total revenue. For the proposed twenty four twenty four budget, the proposed tax levy is relative to the same percentage as the twenty three twenty four.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, we'll have a public comments.
We are looking at district historical.
I'm sorry, Mr. Glass, but. This is. Excuse me, Mr. Glass. You'll have time to make public comment, the public comments section? Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
The twenty four twenty five budget, the proposed tax levy is relatively the same percentage as twenty three twenty four budget and has a small percentage total revenue. From twenty six twenty seven through twenty two twenty three. Shows our commitment to the taxpayers in Monticello Central School District to levy as low as possible and increase other sources of funding. For the budget while maintaining programs for our students. Next slide. Property taxes are capped by the tax levy limit calculation or what is referred to as the two percent tax cap. This slide shows the CPI that is used in that calculation from eighteen nineteen forward. Tax levy limit percent column is the percent increase in the tax cap. Is the percent increase in tax cap calculation determined. Tax levy limit column is the amount that could be raised by the property taxes each year based on that calculation. Tax levy column is the amount of the actual tax levy. Proposed tax levy for twenty four twenty five school year. The next column shows the percentage change from year to year, and the last column shows the amount of taxes that the district has not included in those budgets. The total is over five point seven million dollars. Taxpayers did not fund due to increases in state aid and other sources. Board has worked to ensure that funding in the budget isn't based on what the tax levy limit allows us to raise in taxes. But what is needed to fund our expenditures. Next slide. This slide graphically shows the tax levy limit and the tax levy over time. Proposed tax levy for twenty four twenty five is higher than twenty three twenty four. But lower than the previous years. Tax levy limit shows that the district has not increased taxes up to that limit each year. This slide shows both the tax levy and state aid as a percentage of the total budget. The twenty four twenty five state aid is a larger portion of revenue than the tax levy. The tax levy is a percent of the total budget has decreased over that period of time. Next slide. What is the difference between the tax levy and the tax rate? Tax levy is the total amount of money the district will raise from taxes and is limited by the tax levy cap calculation. Tax rate is determined by a portion of the tax levy to each township in the district based on equalized self values. The assessors in each town determine the properties assessment and New York State's Department of Taxation. Office of Equalization and Assessment. Determines how close to full value those assessments are, assigns an equalization rate. Scenario of the equalization rate is applied to the assessments in each town within the district, each property is then assessed equally. Next slide. Said values and equalization rates are outside the control of the district, but can affect the tax rate for every town within the district. Here's a simple example that shows the change in the equalization rate. And the effect it can have on the tax rate. Example one, both ABC and XYZ town have assessed values of one million dollars. Both have an equalization rate of a hundred percent. When the equalization way is applied to full value for both towns, it's the same. From the hundred thousand dollar way, piece of portion, the tax rate is the same. The scenario never really happens, but it is what the equalization rate attempts to make happen. In reality, each town has differing assessed values and equalization rates. Examples two shows what happens when there's a difference in both assessed values and the equalization rates. ABC towns' full value is now a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars more than the assessed value. XYZ is three hundred and thirty three thousand more than the assessed value. ABC towns' tax levy decreased by three thousand dollars resulting in a tax rate decrease. Of three dollars and twelve cents per thousand. Of assessed value. XYZ towns' tax levy increased by that same three thousand dollars, but because. Assessed values in XYZ town are higher. Tax rate actually decreases by five dollars and seventy three cents per thousand. Yet nothing has changed with the tax levy, only the equalization rate set by, thank New York State. And the assessed values. The assessed age. These changes can shift the tax levy between towns as shown on this slide. Each year, both assessed values and equalization rates change. For each of the five towns and two villages in the district, which is why we can't determine the impact on your tax bill at this time. But the district is committed to keeping the tax levy as low as possible to minimize impact on taxes. So what happens if the proposed twenty four twenty five budget fails to pass? The Board of Education has two options. First, they can hold a revote on June eighteenth, twenty twenty four, present a modified or the same budget. Or two, they can adopt a contingency budget. If the board elects to conduct a revote and the budget fails to pass on the second vote. The board must adopt a contingency budget. And under a contingency budget, budget cannot exceed the amount. Len, tax levy not exceed the amount levied in the previous school year. Our budget proposal includes a two point six percent increase in the tax levy. Also, certain non-contingent items must be removed from the proposed budget, including equipment. People's supplies, salary increases for non-represented employees. In addition. Public use of school facilities is either limited or prohibited depending on whether the use would create a cost to the district. Finally, the contingency budget is subject to an administrative budget cap. The administrative portion of the budget cannot exceed the same percentage that the administrative portion represented in the most recent voter approved budget. Next slide. Other ballot propositions include the capital project proposition and the amount of thirty one point eight million dollars. Board has allocated the remaining capital reserve funds of fourteen million dollars to this project. Remaining seventeen point eight million would need to be financed. The cost of this financing will have, will not have any effect on the twenty four twenty five budget. And most likely not on the twenty five twenty six budget either. We are projecting a six dollar per year cost on a property valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are hopeful that the project may have no cost to taxpayers as our projections are conservative with regard to availability and interest rates. This budget also includes funding to renew the lease of central office at sixty Jefferson Street. The proposed capital improvement project includes renovations to classroom storefronts, basement flooring, ceiling. Of grades in both Cook and Rutherford buildings. Chase Building will see similar improvements, but will be funded with the balance of the fifty four million dollar project. In addition, this project will replace the football soccer field and track at the high school. The side and roof restoration at Saint John Street building and a partial window replacement of the high school along the maximize building aid on the athletic field replacement. Next slide. The annual meeting and election of budget vote will take place on Tuesday, May twenty first, twenty fourth, from eight AM to 8 PM. Moving by electronic voting machines in the following locations. Horseport Town Hall. Rock Hill Fire Department. Duggan Elementary School. Chase Elementary School and the Kaiser Middle School. Next slide. This is a sample of ballot proposition. One is the budget proposal. Proposition two is the capital improvement project proposal. And yes, the ballot is two sided, so there are three open seats on the Board of Education. Each has one candidate running on a.
Thank you. Thank you. My question has to do with slide fifteen. So that's what it talks about, the money that we're going to be getting from the state, the ninety thousand. So that's what it talks about, the money that we're going to be getting from the state, the ninety thousand extra. And then it says that we'll make a determination in August or by that date. Um, even if we were to use it to maybe say, decrease the tax levy, if that was our choice. Um, is that a difference between increasing two point four million to then increasing two point three million from the prior budget? I can tell you this numbers, but it, I mean, I'm just looking at it's maybe not that. I don't want to minimize, but just saying there's not too much of a difference.
It wouldn't have any effect on the expenditure side of the budget, just the revenue side. Will the tax levy number either go down or if you chose it could go down? And then one balance never stays the same.
My question is, that's ballpark what we're talking about here, it's the difference between two point four roughly million to two point three million roughly? Because we're only talking about taking away about a hundred thousand. I'm just talking about the budget from last year to this year. Because the budget last year was ninety.
I thought it was that the, uh, that ninety thousand essentially is a possibility that we could get that as an extra state aid coming in this year. What if we get that money? Um, that would be on top of what the governor had proposed. At a certain point in August, we'll have to make a determination as a board. Do we put that into the, um, fund balance? Or do we put that against the tax levy? And then we'll just make that determination at that point if we even have it in hand.
So the tax levy now is going to like one point two million dollars, so the reduction of that number, not the expenditure.
So the tax levy proposed is forty-four point seven million dollars. The, or the appropriated fund balance that's being proposed right now is seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. So the board can take that ninety thousand dollars and reduce one or both of those amounts.
Thank you. I just want to make sure like the scale of what we were talking about to minimize it because I just didn't want it to sound like it would cut down the percentage of the tax levy that we're asking for dramatically with that additional hundred thousand because it's, we're talking about a couple million versus a hundred thousand. So thank you.
Is the appropriated fund balance and interest bearing account? Uh, Mr. Glass?
I call on the board's attention for the first time in history that the proposed budget is going from ninety-seven million dollars to the excess of one hundred million. These are economically troubled times. I'd like to know why it was necessary. Assume the chief school administrator is the superintendent of schools. That fact?
Sir.
Why was it necessary to raise his salary from three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars? He threatened to leave, not a raise?
Excuse me, first and foremost, that's not my salary. Uh, that, that budget line includes, uh, a number of salaries and benefits, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's the entire.
You're the chief business administrator.
Right.
It's the chief, chief administrator. Then you have another one out of business administration.
I want to clarify your first comment, sir, for the public's benefit. The salary number you indicated is not my salary alone. There's other salaries included.
That's your entire, that's your.
Yeah, that's.
Conferences, that's.
You said mine. My error of reading your chief administrator is now three thirty, three hundred and thirty-four thousand.
That's central administration. That's not chief admin.
Administrator. Chief school administrator. Now that's the superintendent. And on another page here.
What document are you reading off of?
Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, who together with his one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars and fifty-three thousand comes to a two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We also have an assistant superintendent for business. Who's getting two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Now we got more assistants. What is the superintendent doing if he needs one for two hundred and forty, another for two hundred and ninety dollars to help him?
Well, sir, you're welcome to come and follow me any given week. Um, I'd be happy to bring you around to what I do. I want to be clear as to what my salary is because any individual can request my contract. That's a public document. I can assure you it's not, and, and my colleagues' contracts as well. I can assure you that the numbers that you're citing are not our salaries. Those numbers include. And those numbers include a number of things. It benefits, it includes budgets, includes salaries of assistants.
It's a perk. Here we go now with the almost ten million dollars salary. Now let's go to.
I'm sorry, I want to be clear, ten million dollars in salaries is for whom?
Let's go to principal. The principal is getting a hundred and seventy-three thousand, plus benefits is not shown here. How much are the benefits? How many assistant principals are there? They're overloaded, overpaid, high-priced. People are not on the instructional level. We can't afford a hundred and some, a hundred and some million dollar budget. And the place to cut it is to stop giving raises to people who don't need raises. Now, it's nice if you make a three hundred, to make it three hundred and seven thousand dollars. What is, what's the escape wire without that? Saying perks, retirement is something that you know is delightful for school. And the medical is delight. That's part of, it's, it's part of the salary because you're getting it because you have to pay for it. And as someone goes on all through them. And you read here, you know, these line items. Leases for example. And I foiled that, they refuse to give me this information until tomorrow morning. The new premises of Widera Jefferson Street have a net-net lease. And I foiled last year or two years ago and this year also, but didn't get it because I have to wait till tomorrow morning because they couldn't get it. That means on top of the rental, if we are paying a proportionate share by square footage of every other charge in that shop, that's center. The taxes, the insurance, the electricity, the snow removal, the lawn, the this, the that, and everything. How much is it costing us to lease that, those offices over here? You guys are going to hog wild with the taxpayers' money.
Hundred sixty-five thousand dollars a year, sir.
You what?
A hundred sixty-five thousand dollars a year.
Even what?
That's what we budgeted next year for the lease of the sixty Jefferson Street property. That was your question?
An even number?
That's what we budgeted for, correct?
It's a net-net lease. You've got it hidden under these, other, the, other, other items.
That's not correct.
Principal payments. You see, it, it's really cute, they have this setup. And the salaries and equipment, general supplies for maintenance is one item. General supplies because they're central purchasing, central printing and mailing, fifty-five thousand to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. How do you double that? And then you have one item here, unallocated insurance, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
I want to answer the one question you had, sir, on the fifty-five, you asked fifty-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollar printing lease? Um, we opted to take that from, away from a BOSI service and give it to, and provide it here locally to a local company that we contract with for those services. So that money technically stays in the district to a, a local business.
And we have here items, supplies, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, is this from pencils and papers?
Well, every board meeting from beginning of February up until two weeks ago, we have administrators who present the budget proposals throughout. All of those meetings are online on the YouTube channel and you're certainly welcome to go back and review those and those are given, uh, you know, each principal comes in here and presents them. Uh, administrators present their proposed budgets and they're all in there. Correct.
Printing services for nineteen thousand dollars and general supplies for sixty-five hundred. What are the general supplies, six thousand five hundred? Little spread on the ground?
Uh, no, that's not on my budget line, sir.
I think I made my point. Thank you very much for that. I'm going to tell you this, it's going to be in the newspaper. I'm going to, you better pay this budget down. And be careful, who's ruling against you because.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. I do want to clarify for the record that some of the, uh.
In twenty-six minutes from the meeting, you have to continue in seconds. Why don't you follow me at three o'clock? Don't worry about us, nobody cares.
The salary numbers that, uh, the member of the community cited, uh, were not, uh, accurate relative to what individuals earn in their take-home salaries. Um, those, that information can be found online, there are various agencies online where people can look those up pretty easily. The numbers that are in the budget though include a number of factors, including benefits, including assistant salaries, benefits and other supplies that are uh, in the lines that the number of the community referenced, so just for clarification. Any other questions or comments regarding the budget here, any thinking?
Yeah, quick question. For twenty-three thousand. All right, forgot what page. We could real property for twenty-three thousand. What is that a revenue?
It's on the revenue side. That's our weekly portion of our Duggan buildings in the town of Bethel, and so that's the revenue that comes in.
Any other questions or comments regarding the budget here, Ashley?
I would just like to comment on some of the bigger baby ticket items, just the discussion about maybe four pieces on slide eleven. It talks about how we are spending two million less on BOSI services. And I just want to be clear that the understanding on that is because, um, we have students that could have used their services, but there wasn't room at this time to receive them from BOSI's.
Yes, correct. So the ship from BOSI services to program support is the two million dollars. BOSI's isn't able to place all of our kids, so we have to look for other alternative placements. So we have to reduce the BOSI's budget and increase the other ones so that we can place our kids where they need to work.
Thank you. So I saw that half of, half of millions, five hundred thousand is for transportation increase and that would be part of that is that we're busing students.
Yes.
Further away because there's nothing available closer.
And we have, have had to enter into contracts with private transportation companies in order to do that because we don't have the staff or the buses to go down to Westchester, Butler County.
And then, um, so when you spoke of program support, uh, an example of that would be something, um, like a, um, facility perhaps an hour or two away, it's, if that's the program support, that would be an example?
Right. It's, it's called program support, but it would be tuition. Okay, that's all included in the program support role, the contractual, the tuition, contractual.
Okay, thank you.
Can we spell it? Um, we have to ship our students two hours away because BOSI's fail to find appropriate placement local for our students. So that's why our funding is so high in these areas is due to BOSI's inability to place our children locally.
Correct. That is a, a portion of why our budget hasn't increased, yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion to reconvene the meeting. Me and by Mr. Grodin, seconded by Mr. Vera, any discussion, all in favor? So, order. I'm moving on to the consent agenda. Mrs. Greco.
Um, I motion that, that we approve consent agenda items F one, T L two.
I have a second on that, made by Mrs. Holmes. Discussion. All in favor? So, order. Uh, thank you very much, Mrs. Greco. So moving on from there, information reports and discussions, board roundtable. Mrs. Holmes.
Um, I, uh, attended a policy meeting. Did it? Yeah.
Um, Vera?
I have nothing to report.
Sorry.
I attended a policy meeting earlier and then, um, I also was able to see a portion of the capital projects walk through, but, um, Dr. Evans and, um, the athletic director, Ryan Jasper, did a really terrific job uh, to explain the project and the scope of, of the track and how uh, all the patchwork that's been done and how it's in dire need of, uh, of a whole replacement and to not just patchwork as what we've been seeing over the past, uh, dozen of years or so. So, uh, that was very informative and I appreciate that. Uh, other than that, I've been going to little league baseball games at the Mamakating near, uh, Emma Chase, and I've been doling out information on our capital project. And thank you very much.
Mrs. Larusso.
I went to the, uh, walkroom along with Trustee Ryland, President Crumley, Dr. Evans. Um, I echo what Trustee Riley said, our, you're needed a few. The football field, the track, it, it desperately needed. Um, I also attended a table event, President Crumley and Dr. Evans on Sunday morning. It was nice to, to go follow up and speak with everyone. I attended a court contact meeting, which I, uh, my second one attends in and I, I do, um, enjoy it. I learned different things, especially with word in our court contact, like unwanted behavior, like what's unwanted to me to be different to all of you. So, you know, things like that are, are coming out of it and great experience. Um, and the policy meeting, and I want to say congratulations to our students for their, the New York State skill, the US competition, we took second place, pre-seers did. Uh, the National History Day. That's, congratulations to everyone, that's really it.
So, Mr. Grodin.
I had the pleasure of talking to the public at Trading Post at Rock Hill with President Crumley and our superintendent, Dr. Evans. And knew a couple people, be able to press hands, give hugs. What I want to impress upon the public is that for so long we have gone without, done without, and the grounds have gone without. And now we are infusing it with the smartest possible way we can do it, the most fiscally responsible. Four out of five accountants agree. And, um, we are looking to do nothing but build a tradition and in Coach Jasper's words, what a terrific time it is to be a Panther. So, um, with that, I was also really proud to be at the meeting where we were deciding on owners reps because our last bond didn't have.
Owner manager.
Oh, owners reps?
Construction manager.
Yeah, who would be the construction manager would be our owners rep? Nope, fine. Construction managers. And I was encouraged by the candidates that were in front of us. It's so, so many positive things coming together. It's been many years coming, but I can't wait. That's all the report.
Thank you, Mr. Grodin.
So I want to thank all our board members for all the time and effort that they have put in meeting with our community and parents and family members just to answer questions and to provide information for the bond that is coming up. Um, I attended recently, um, track meet or two just out of curiosity because it's something I've never experienced. I started out with a home meet and I then went to an away meet. Um, I will tell you that I'm looking forward after going to another school to see an invitational. Um, I'm looking forward and hoping that this bond passes, uh, for our students um, for the well-needed fields and facility upgrade that, um, is required. Um, I missed, um, a graduation committee, but I'm hoping that trustee, um, Larusso can maybe possibly give us an update. I believe everything is going along great for graduation. I do have one question, um, and there's been some questions by parents. Um, clarification, maybe, uh, Larusso would know. Um, if it rains and it's held in the auditorium, there's some confusion whether there will be two seats inside with four seats given in the overflow. with four seats given in the overflow area cafeteria gym, or if it's four seats in the inside of the cafeteria with two seats being the overflow. So I'm getting conflicting um questions from parents being what they're told from different sources. So I was just hoping that someone could, I I couldn't find anything in any of the emails for the committee, but just clarification, they're wondering if it rains, if they get two in the auditorium or four. I believe it's six tickets in general. So that was that, um. In addition, I have one other question. Um, and um I didn't know, uh it's just a a general question for programming because I've been talking to some other uh schools and uh people in other districts. Do we have any of these programs just out of curiosity in our school um still Odyssey of the Mind? Does anybody know if that's still something our school has? And I don't know, hobby, that's a leadership development program, if anybody's heard of that, if our school has any uh where, how you say it? Hobi, thank you. So and uh the gifted and talented program, those the three that when I was speaking for about other uh things that uh were born into other schools to help make um learning, leadership and things upon the uh bring ownership to uh the other high school type of students. Those are some of the things that are thrown at me and I honestly didn't know if our school ever had it, if there was maybe something we could reinstitute, um I think we had Odyssey of the Mind when I was here, but I can't remember.
Yeah, we did.
We did, I don't know if we still have it.
Somebody was in it.
Thank you, uh but those are just some of the things I'm throwing out there, I don't know if anybody's heard of them, or if they might be something that maybe we could look into, or if it's complicated, or if there's community people that could help implement that, I wasn't sure, so just wanted to throw that up. Thank you. Oh, wait, one more thing, one more, I would say one more thing. I want to thank my superintendent Lisa especially for all the hard work you guys put into putting this budget together. Under this under this time with inflation and the ever rising cost of living, I'm very proud and I thank you for all the hard work in putting our budget together. Thank you. Now, don't.
Great.
Um, we had our policy meeting today and um it was, we got through a couple of policies, they'll be first reads at the next meeting. And then our next policy meeting will actually be on June twenty.
Thank you so much. Um. I don't know, Dr. Evans probably thinks I'm stalking him at this point, I run into him when I don't even mean to, with the table and tablecloth on it. Um, I think we've been together at the Trading Post, the Bagel Bakery, Little League. Um, ran into him at the uh high school um concert the other night. Um, so thank you very much, Dr. Evans, for being out in the public, um pushing the information about the bond. Um, and hopefully encouraging people to come out and vote on May twenty first. Um, played a few softball games, modified track meets, um also with Mr. Grodin, Ms. Holmes and uh Miss Jersey, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, um Capital Project Committee, um which we, I'll talk to Helen hopefully in the next day or so, and we can solidify our next meeting next week. Um, and I'd also like to echo what um Ms. Galligan said in terms of thank you very much for putting the budget together, it has been a uh rough go bit with the state kind of up in the air and not exactly adhering to the law of the land. But uh thank you for putting that together for us. So, moving on from there. We have our principal reports. Questions, comments, concerns, questions? What are the principal reports, yes?
Well, just like to say that I really like all the pictures that the principals are putting in their reports, kind of brings reports alive, let's break it down. And the senior prom. I know we're gonna have student reps here, but they have a need to see eighteen. What's coming up with the fourth picture? Thank you.
Yeah, next weekend. Moving on from there, um we have correspondence outcomes, they are listed in the um agenda. Need to see. Policy committee member, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley, so as was discussed earlier, uh there was a uh board policy committee meeting earlier tonight, we have a new uh a batch of policy updates from the New York State School Boards Association, a lot of them focusing on uh memorializing New York State Education Law two D, which protects uh students and staff members uh personal identification, personally identifiable inter information uh or their private data. Uh so we're working through that and we'll have uh two policies with regulations for first read of the next meeting. And then tonight, I believe there's a number of policies that are up for adoption too, and all those also come to us from this but policy service.
Questions come. Any questions for Dr. Evans on policy? Moving on, capital project update.
Thank you, President Crumley, so a couple of things, uh first and foremost, as was mentioned earlier, there is a uh capital project of vote uh that will be put to community members uh May twenty first, along with the budget vote and Board of Education member election. Uh I don't want to take a quick moment just to recognize uh President Crumley, Mr. Grodin, uh Ms. Stalter, who will be running and and Ms. Rivera, thank you for your service on the board of the past three years. Um, so those seats are also up for election. Relative to the capital project, we do have an informational website. Uh, if you go to our website, you'll see links in there for more information. I have been to a number of places uh mentioned before. Uh Tuesday of this week, I met with the high school and middle school faculty and this morning uh we had a joint uh faculty meeting with the elementary schools of St. John Street via Zoom uh to present that information with them. And also, as was mentioned earlier by trustee Grodin, uh the Capital Project Committee interviewed two firms for construction management back on May first. Uh, the committee uh was seeking more information on a particular firm, I've gathered that information. Um, and uh I have uh, I I think, I believe the committee members have that in their email, but I believe that we're trying to schedule a meeting to review that in more detail, I think on or around May twenty third. Um, and again, that would be a contingent upon the approval of the project, so if the project is not approved, there's no construction management service needed. I believe, Mr. Groden, when you were referring to an owner's rep would be uh another uh contractor with the district who would oversee the work of the uh construction management firm and the architect, very what used to be referred to as a clerk of the verse.
Yep.
And that was a policy that the board adopted maybe a little over a year ago.
It was uh.
Yeah, um to uh help better oversight with capital project work a lot better.
Any questions, comments regarding capital project?
Comment, comment. My comment is to, I have to just echo that again, uh I, so many people don't understand that what this board has done is we have learned, we're very organic in our process of that. In our fiduciary responsibility, we are looking to make sure that we eliminate with pre fabrication quotes with guidance there, not just an owner's rep that we were terribly lacking, I'm just untied. On, there is such a a push to make sure that we get it right. Way better than our last bond, the bond was great, we got our high school covered and we had roofs done and we had solar put on. We are looking to be even more efficient with our money and we keep getting better each time we come out with a new bond, you have to know that, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Groden. Uh, moving on to upcoming events, um there's a lot listed there, it gets pretty busy this time of year, um I hope everyone has a twenty sixth of June marked off your calendars for the Monticello School District graduation, um believe we did pass along to the graduation committee to get us tassels. Um, if any, I anything that was requested, if it was not requested, it was not. Um, but there is a lot of stuff coming up, so um keep your eyes open for that. Uh, community events listed in the um listed there in the agenda. Um. The one thing listed tennis courts ribbon cutting ceremony, um thank you to everyone who was there for that, it was very nice. Uh Janet, any questions or comments from the public?
None at this time.
Sorry.
Thank you, Janet. Moving on to superintendent update information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley, very quickly tonight, just some uh additional uh recognition, uh this is uh teacher appreciation week, this is nurse appreciation week, I see we have a couple of teachers here tonight and uh we've been uh giving out our public thanks to their work uh as well as uh uh nurses, and then I think last week we also had principals day and food, lunch lunch hero day. Um, we were doing recognition, formal recognitions of them by the board later on tonight. Uh, some recognitions of our students, we have three graduates and one underclassmen actually who are receiving the seal of biliteracy. Uh, I met with them today. We have uh you know, some other uh special graduates too, like the seal of civic readiness, uh there are students who are still working towards that, so they they kind of have to go to the end of the year to earn that. Uh, and in the arts pathway that's still piloting, we don't have any graduates yet in that, we do have a graduate kind of through the old method for that, but uh no new graduates yet. I want to recognize uh the class of twenty four valedictorian, Kritika Talupther. Will be recognized by the Sullivan County Legislature next Thursday, May sixteenth at ten AM. Uh, they do that recognition every year, uh so congratulations to her. Uh, also, uh Sullivan County BOSI's uh would like to present to each component district uh sometime preferably in the fall uh to include uh different types of data, uh revenues, expenditures, et cetera. Uh partnerships basically that each district does with the BOSI's. Um, I will, you know, confirm with the board later in the fall, once I receive some tentative dates from Sullivan BOSI's, but it's a way for them to uh explain and present to the Board of Education about what they offer our students. Uh, as many of you know, unfortunately, uh we had an incident last week in Monticello High School where uh we believe a student, uh but an individual uh put up anti semitic graffiti uh in uh some student bathrooms, uh that incident is still under investigation and sadly, uh we discovered another bathroom uh with similar graffiti, anti semitic graffiti in it today. Um. I can't begin to express uh my displeasure with with what has been uh written out or or vandalized in our bathrooms by presumed students. Uh, and we're taking a number of steps to address the issue. Uh, they are noted in a public statement that we put out earlier today, uh but primarily uh looking at educational opportunities. Uh, working with the Anti-Defamation League to provide those uh reestablishing the No Place for Hate Committee uh and working to have the high school identified as a No Place for Hate school. Uh, we did put out information of that effect, uh Ms. Leffberg, Assistant Principal of the High School is kind of coordinating that, so if anyone in the community or students are interested in being on that committee, then please contact her. Um, but uh we uh will obviously hold these individuals accountable, should we discover them. Um, but sadly, uh this is a reflection of what's happening in our larger society. Uh, there was a news article today in uh news or yesterday's uh eclipse from News and Notes about uh the incidence of uh anti semitic incidents. According to the Anti-Defamation League, they increased by a hundred ten percent last year. And in New York State, incidents of harassment overall are up by two hundred twenty six percent in the last year. Uh, so uh we have work to do as a school district, as many other institutions in our society have work to do as well. Uh, for better, for more tolerance and ending bigotry and hatred and anti sentiments. Last but not least, some good news. Uh, we have two give back days. They will be added to the weekend of Memorial Day weekend, a Memorial Day weekend, so Friday, May twenty fourth and Tuesday, May twenty eighth, we'll have uh no school for students, those are considered snow days because we still have two snow days remaining, and obviously we'll be closed on May twenty seventh for more.
Any comments?
Just want to say thank you, Dr. Evans, for your strong language that you wrote um about the incident initially. I have yet to read what you wrote today, I was not aware until a bit ago, but I I I appreciate also your voicing of your um your your quick response and strong response to remedy. So I appreciate it, thank you very much.
I'm gonna make that, yeah, me too, thank you, thank you.
I regret to have to say it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Uh, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, Miss Bailey.
Thank you, President Crumley, tonight I only have two items, um both are donations to two of our elementary schools. Uh, Sullivan one eighty and the Chase PTO are making a donation to Chase. And Sullivan one eighty is making a donation to the Cook schools, and they seem to accept the donation and they have the budget so they can spend more.
Questions for Lisa?
Uh, I got a question. How can we arrange, um trustee Gally and I were at the um annual meeting and we saw this amazing vendor that had very interesting vending machine, which can be used for PBIS. They had gold coins, you would reward it to a student. We have it, stop it. We got, how many have we got though?
One. Just one so far.
Okay, so that's one so far, right, that's cool, but we have other buildings.
That's what the so far was for.
I know.
Working on.
So how can, I, okay, so that's awesome, I was trying to get in every one of those little schools. Even the middle school, because you can still turn them. Okay, cool, so we have three elementary schools that are really needing them. So I'm advocating for the three elementary schools, they they would go Gaga, not lady, but just Gaga over it. So how can we do that as a board?
You allocate the monies and you test us with going out and getting them.
Awesome. Thank you. Really much for the elementary.
I should bring up the fact that this is for a garden. Yes, two donations, can, so can anyone speak on that, talking about more about what what it involves, it's just putting together a garden for the students to use and.
Well. At the risk of using a very bad pond and seed money. Um, no, there's a there is a a garden at Cook Elementary School in the the quad, you can see it there if you was, so if you walk in, and similarly at Cook Elementary School, well, there's might be, where's theirs? In their interior quad as well? It might be in their interior quad as well, they're they're kind of raised beds. Um, and uh that's the primary use for these monies. Um, there's also some at Cook. I believe there's some outdoor education components as well. The Chase, it's edible gardens and at Cook, it's a uh they were doing some outside like hiking and and other outdoor activities, training, and they just went to some training last week. I'll ask Ms. Gallant to reference it in upcoming.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, I know the graduation committee meeting, we talked about the garden out of the middle school house, it's gonna will not look how it looked, what's going on with that?
My understanding is they're painting the containers, aren't you talking about graduation?
If I mean in general, what is that, with that bar, are our students not planting anything in there, or is there?
I have to look. Yeah, I haven't heard it, I haven't heard anything new on that card.
It's just, I was curious, I could find anything about that.
But Larusso, do you know what they're gonna look for donations to buy flowers?
It's coming very soon.
Any other questions for our Assistant Superintendent of Business? Very much, Lisa, moving on, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Teresa.
Thank you, President Crumley, good evening, everyone, um I have two contracts uh for your review and approval tonight, the first one um is for Cheryl Newark, and I did uh leave you some literature earlier, just so that you have some more information about um what she is presenting on, so she is going to do some staff professional development this summer. Um, again, things that we've already been working on and would like to continue seeing around restorative practices. Um, teaching teachers how to to better work with students through the use of circles, um building relationships. And so um if you have any questions on her information, I did provide that and I'd be happy to go further into that. Um, the other contract that we have on for your approval tonight is through Solution Tree, so we are going to start working with Solution Tree. Um, again, both of these contracts and programs are grant funded, not general fund funded. Um, working with Solution Tree on professional learning communities, if you've heard that uh term, PLCs uh as an acronym. Um, so we believe that the more we work with our staff in looking at data and look, understanding why um instructional practices need to be a certain way, instructional coaching, um having conversations with colleagues about what works for them in their classroom. Um, the more we do that, the better, we're going to be a resource for our students moving forward, so we're going to start doing that work um next school year, it's a slow process. Um, but this is the first step towards that, and this summer we will have some training for administrative. Um, but this is the first step towards that. And this summer we will have some training for administrative staff. Um, as they learn more about that process as well. And the last thing I have for you is at the board meeting, the last board meeting, I did mention that we were selected for grants. Um, and the resource allocation grant. Um, and that at that point, uh, Lisa and I and forever other administrative members were going to go to Albany to learn more about the conference. Um, we've seen that last week on the thirtieth and Lisa, feel free to interject. Um, if I'm missing anything, but I think Lisa and I went into it not really knowing what to expect, as I mentioned to you at the last board meeting. Um, I think we came away from that understanding that this is something that school districts. Most likely are going to have to do eventually across the state, not by choice, but by. Um, requirement of the state and there will not be any funding attached to it, or if there is funding attached to it, it's going to be very, very restrictive. Um, and specific and it could potentially be tied to federal funds or maybe even foundation needs. So. We walked away from the day we spent in Albany recognizing that this is something we should be doing right now because we're being given funding for it. So we're kind of. Jumping ahead, um, and the work that they're having us do over the next twelve or thirteen months is actually really good work. So. Just to kind of remind you, and, and this was sent to you in the last board meeting, but I'd be happy to resend information. Um, we're looking at equity among school funding. Teacher quality and diversity, teacher leadership quality and diversity, empowering rigorous content. Um, and instructional time and attention. All those five, we all have to do school funding, um, and then we can pick two of the other four remaining to focus on. The last twelve months of this grant. I don't know what those will be yet. As a committee, we haven't made that decision. But just to give you an example, um, when we look at school funding, we already started doing a little bit of this work this year. Um, for example, we took a look at our three elementary buildings and how our RTI teachers. Are, um, dispersed throughout those buildings. So we really looked at our students that are of the highest needs or our tier three. Learners who need additional support from those RTI providers and we wanted to make sure that. Those RTI providers were placed in the buildings by ratio as needed. So. Um, we just had a conversation with our principals about shifting some of those RTI providers around between the three buildings. And really having them focus on the highest need students. So that would be an example of equitable funding. So using our, our money, our federal dollars or general fund dollars to be able to. Give resources to the students that are in the need of those resources, whatever they might be. Uh, so that's just one example of, of what we're looking at through this, uh, resource allocation grant. Any questions?
Okay, I, I wrote down some of your bullet points, so. Mind saying a couple of them again, because I thought you said that you sent the information, but I must have missed where those bullets were. So say the teacher quality and diversity, I wrote that one down. And then school funding, is that the one you're talking about now about how the RTI teachers are dispersed? Through the highest needs?
Yes.
Okay, so that's under school funding.
That's under school funding. So that's one of the other. Oh, um, so teaching quality and diversity.
I have that.
Um, school leadership quality and diversity. So almost the same thing, but, uh. Teachers that are in leadership roles or administrative roles versus teaching roles.
Same.
And then empowering rigorous content. So really looking at, and this is something that we were planning on focusing on next year. And now it fits nicely into this, really looking at raising the bar and having higher expectations for. Students and staff, um, and you know, having that belief that if we expect more, they will give us more basically. And then the last one is instructional time and attention. So really looking at how we spend our day, um, how much time do we spend on ELA? How much time do we spend on elective? Where does, um, music fit in? And making sure that that's equitable amongst all buildings and all programs.
Okay, so there's five bullet points and then you said you're to pick. The school funding and then can you just say that part again about how, what you picked from?
Correct. So as part of this resource allocation pilot grant. Um, every district that was chosen has to focus on school funding because apparently the state feels that that's the most important at this point. Um, and then of the remaining four, we have to pick two. That we as a school district in our committee feel like we want to focus on over the next year. And then the additional funding from this brand will be used to focus on those two areas.
Okay, and this is all. Just an umbrella with, with the thought of equity. Or no, it was, it was at the point of it, just basically like how does all of these areas become more equitable?
I think, yeah, basically just equity across the board and making sure that our dollars, um, our teaching staff, you know, how we do things. Is, is serving every student based on what they need. Um, for, for lots of different reasons.
So then the highest needs, just for example, children with the highest needs are based upon, say, there's. More concentration of students that have, um, the tier three. So that's the need.
Yes, correct.
So you have a bulk of students, there's more, uh, percentage in that school versus another school. So you want to make sure that the. The help, assistance for.
Yeah, the ratio, like I think teacher to student ratios are proportionate across those schools. Right? And that's just one example, not, not all of it.
So I think the point is a lot of this work we recognize we have to do even before this grant came out. And then when it came out, we were like, oh. We're already doing some of this stuff. This, so this is kind of convenient that we're now given this opportunity to look deeper and, and have some funding data as well.
In the grant, if I recall, a half a million, correct?
Four hundred thousand. Um, and right now, it's, it's actually for fifty total. Fifty right now is really just for all of the planning work that we're doing, the travel to conferences, and then the four hundred is to implement. Any of the programming that we feel is necessary through those. Three pieces that we're going to be looking at.
Can you say if there's any other local schools that are also doing this or is it just us that you know?
In Sylvan County, we're the only ones. Oh, that's okay. Well, yeah. Um, Rochester, Buffalo, Connect City, Elmira. Mostly city schools. Um, but again, it, there were specific requirements and, and I, if you look at the last board agenda, there were attachments to that. But again, I can send you the website. They were looking for specific requirements such as having more than, um, five school buildings, um, having a certain socioeconomic. Um, status, having a so, certain diversity population. Um, so there was, there were factors. If we're a school in need of improvement, which we have two buildings that are schools in need of improvement. So all of those pieces are what identified us as being eligible for this.
You have a question?
Thank you. So when you say, um, higher expectations. Of students, does that mean we're going to be changing at the homework policy? We currently have? Because I mean, that goes with expectations.
And so I don't, I wouldn't say homework necessarily, but we're going to be looking at how we grade, how we, um, assign things potentially, um, how students. Fair in a, a class gets certain score and how they do on state assessments. So all of that kind of factors in.
Oh, see, as I shared before, we are looking at the grading policy.
Right, right. The high expectations kind of. Um, I have a question. It would be, um. Cheryl Newark, Newark, where did you find her?
Um, she was actually recommended to me by someone in, in doing some research on restorative practices and just trying to find some new. Ideas, um, because we're, we're finding that all of our buildings are. Enjoying having Dr. Lester there this year and want to start doing more. So I just thought this would be. Someone new to offer some professional development and we'll see how it goes and maybe we'll extend into the school year if she's well received.
Yeah, I could have put, and her thing here, it's a remarkable success, but I couldn't find anything on her for success. Either she just started out?
Um, no, I think she's been in doing this work for several years. I can find you more information. I think if you Google her, I think her name shows up, but that's, that's it. I mean, you say that you have a remarkable success. I'd like to see. Your success that you had.
And then it also says that support a specific group of people, remainder life changes, prices are difficult. What group of people? I didn't hear what it says.
On. People first on the bottom. It says that, um, for since a.
Group of people for major life change, crisis or difficulty. What group of people?
Well, I think that's probably when she does circle work, she's going to be talking about certain, you know. Certain mental health issues potentially, or if we're working with students that have certain concerns or building relationships.
Okay, can you give me more information on her? Because I'm just, I just Googled her and I couldn't find anything. Yeah, sure. Thank you.
I have a question on her, um. As far as implementing, say referrals, I know that's probably something that would likely not be in. Her scope, but let's just say there's restorative practice. We hear those things and maybe we have those techniques, but then how does that, so you say dovetail or whatnot into the actual policy and how to implement it?
But it wouldn't be policy so much, but it would be how we work with students, um, in a more assertive way instead of a less. You know, disciplinary way. So instead of suspending students for long periods of time, maybe we would do some things working with them. Um, restoratively.
Sure. And that's our code of conduct though. I remember from the year or two back, it was. Restorative practices and it was overhaul. So that's why I thought that if she's talking about restorative practices, I understand it's likely not in her scope for this. Year based upon the money that's being asked for, but it's talking about perhaps. Going on in the future and maybe finding out how we can actually. Understand better how to. When, when would be maybe acceptable to write a referral, what type of referral, things like that. Because I think that there is some murkiness there. How to go about that and not to be told how to re, write a referral or, or when necessarily, but, but it's okay to, when. How do you implement something? You learn how to. The gist of it perhaps, but then what, like getting down to brass tacks, how is a teacher supposed to implement or other staff persons were supposed to implement it and then. Um, make sure that they can say, okay, well, I did X, Y, Z. And then on my expectation is that this is the follow through or whatnot.
And I think that's part of the professional development and working with these individuals and learning how to do that better. And you know. Um, we talk about code of conduct committee, that's a lot of what that committee is looking at. Vicki mentioned vocabulary and how words are used. So it's, it's a, it's a very large process. Um, that we're, you know, kind of getting through a little bit of.
Okay, I. I have, uh, questions about the other, the solution. So that one. You said both, both of them are covered under the violence prevention grant, so.
They're both in title grant.
Title grant. Okay, so then, um, this one, the solution tree. Um, this one's for seventy-one thousand. This is, uh, eleven days of coaching, sixty-five hundred dollars a day. And then there's a, a day once a month. Okay, just want to be clear, August, September, October. And then, um, this has to do with. Coaching based upon the data?
So this has to do with tier one instruction and looking at data to drive our instruction. And so when we talk about data, we talk about instructional practice, how we're. Working with students, um, you know, how we instruct them, what's successful for us or when we do things a certain way, are we noticing better results? Where students are learning differently, better, those kinds of things. So it's really having those professional conversations. About what are you doing in your classroom? And is it working for you? Maybe I can come in and watch your lesson because I'm having some difficulty with getting students to engage or I'm having. Difficulty with getting students to do well on assessments when I think I'm teaching them what they need to know, but they're not showing me that they're learning it. So. It's really learning how to have those conversations to help each other in the classroom. And then with our instructional coaches. It's having colleagues going in, watching lessons and then giving feedback on those lessons. Um, to help us all be better instructors, tier one. So the hope is we have less kids going to tier two and less kids going to tier three.
Okay, so the intent is to strengthen tier one first? And then, um, so is it the instructional coach that we're. Paying for that's going to help our individual teachers?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be something like, um, one day per month. Maybe not even at a conference stage, just during the school day, they just come in and they'll just pick.
Yeah.
One teacher and go down.
Yeah, it'll be very, it'll be very scheduled. It'll be by building. Um, some of it might be, you know, a group of teachers and we get subs for them. So it's going to be different as we move through the process.
Okay, I'm, I'm done with my questions for Solution Tree, but, um, I do have a question, one more and then, but I don't know if anybody else has Solution Tree. I just wanted, because I was told this is the time to speak on it. I just wanted to clarify. The program and I, I believe you're the one to speak to about it, but the program of my brother's keeper. Is it for all students?
Yes.
Okay. There is some, um. Questions out there that, um, based upon some assemblies, um, that it wasn't crystal clear. That it's for all students. So, um, since your confirmation is for all students. I'm just laying out there that. Just like when we're talking about, um, the graffiti in the bathroom and we want to be explicit and clear. Similarly, with this situation, I think it would be good for us to make it crystal clear that this. This, any group, any, um, program at school is open to all students. And if there isn't a program that's open to those students. Um, I don't know what that program is, but, um, I just think that that's important to inform the community and the people in the school. So thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions, Mrs. Bailey? Thank you very much, Teresa. Um, moving on to action items. Spreco.
I'd like to motion that we approve action items T one to T nine and T eleven to T sixteen as a group.
Do I have a second on that by Ms. Rivera? Any discussion?
I, I wanted to, um, bring the, can you tell me what number first again? I'm sorry.
T one through T eight?
Okay. Everything but T ten.
Contract for Cheryl.
Right, um.
T sixteen. Oh, no.
Um, yeah, T sixteen, night. We move to T sixteen.
I would like to amend my motion to ask that we take action items T one through T nine and T eleven to T fifteen as a group.
Do I have a second on that by Ms. Rivera? Any discussion? All in favor? Order. Spreco.
Um, I'd like the motion that we approve action items T one through T nine and T eleven through T six, T fifteen, excuse me.
I have a second on that by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All.
Sorry. You pulled out T.
Ten and T sixteen.
I can discuss it now.
Which ones?
T ten.
No, yeah.
We're just doing T one, nine, eleven, fifteen. So no discussion, all in favor? So order. Spreco.
I'd like the motion that we bring for action item T ten.
Do I have a second on that by Ms. Rivera? Any discussion?
Feel comfortable voting for this when I look things up and I don't see it's a remarkable success. I just would like more information before I. Vote on this.
Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Spreco.
I'd like to motion that we move, um, forward action item T sixteen.
Do I have a second on that? By Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to closing a meeting correspondence. Unlisted at this time.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yes. No, not a video, is it?
Oh, yeah. Dr. Evans has one thing for us.
Two brief announcements. First, I want to recognize the appointment of Kristen Hupman, who will start as our new school lunch manager on June third. And secondly, tomorrow is School Communicators Day. I think she's trying to hide in the back, but I do want to recognize Porky Benfante. Almost everything you see on our website uh and uh things that go under my name uh is uh the result of her work. So uh, thank you, Ms. Benfante.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, Reggie, any questions or comments from the public? Thank you, sir. A motion to adjourn made by Mr. Grodin, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Um, if you're a student and need anything signed off by a board member, any board member can sign off your stuff.